Calling the Brandon Board of Education Regular Meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Melissa Clark present, Rebecca Haynes.
Here.
Lisa Calhoun, absent with notice. Kimberly Smith Colaga, absent with notice. Hillary Stokowski.
Here.
Jeff Zizoki.
Here.
Ellen Salter.
Here.
Dr. Gary Richards.
Here.
Jan Meek.
Here.
Carly Stone, absent with notice. Sam Zedan.
Here.
Okay, Sam for the religious. Let's.
Religious to the why of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, next on our agenda, we have the Brandon High School Student Report. Who do we have?
So I talked to both students during six hours today, and I don't see any of them here, so I'm not sure.
Okay, wait, I just turned the door.
Okay.
I've seen somebody. It looks like a high school student.
There he is.
Hi, from the high school for the report.
Yes, and we're waiting on another person. I didn't hear she's asked.
Okay, well, we'll come back to you, okay, because we want to hear it. We're going to move next to the Ortonville Pride Festival in Abigail Rowe. You know, Kim, Kaluga Smith and Melissa Clark have been talking and working with you. Melissa, go ahead and introduce her.
So I'm super excited to present Abigail and her crew to come up and speak for a few minutes. We've been working for, it seems like forever, the logistics and the idea, and I think that it's important. You are a sophomore in our high school, you know, student in our district. And you are working on your gold award, which my understanding is the highest achievement that's earned and recognized by the Girl Scout Organization. So, Abigail, you could come up with your group and give everybody a little information. We'd appreciate it.
Okay, she's not. Um, is this what you say?
Yes, yes.
Do whatever I do.
Um, so I'm Abigail Rowe. I'm sixteen and I'm sophomore at Brandon High School.
You're okay.
You're good.
Take your time.
Okay.
Geez. Or nice. Take out the time you need.
Um, you got this. So I've been at Brandon since I was a wee young one. And as you said, I'm a Girl Scout. I've been a Girl Scout since I was in kindergarten. We're actually the only high school Girl Scout troop that's left in Brandon, which is really cool. And I'm working on my gold award, which is similar to an Eagle Scout Award and Boy Scouts, if you're more familiar with that. And I was driving in the car with my mom on the way home from our Christmas vacation. And I was watching YouTube videos of a Pride Festival, and I mentioned that I thought that it was crazy that we didn't have one here because I really wanted to go. And I knew that I wouldn't be able to make it out to another one because it's very far away. And my mom said, well, why don't you do it? And then I thought, wow, that's a great idea for my gold award. So then I immediately called or texted my mentor Marion, who's here. Because she's been really involved in the community and she, she used to like help with my brother's sports, and I've always known her and her amazing family and her wife. So I thought that she'd be the perfect person to ask. And we, almost immediately after my dance recital ended that year, we started planning this, Pride Festival, and the process was long and it's still going. We first got approval from the Girl Scout Committee to have this be my award. The Girl Scout Gold Award is very, they have a lot of processes that you have to take, and there's a lot of rules that you have to follow in order to get it. So I had to get approval from them. And then we got approval from the Brandon, we got not written like legal approval, but we got support from the Brandon Township Supervisor, and then we went and got our permits from the Ortonville Village Council, and that took about six months to go through the process of getting those permits. We had to get them signed by a bunch of people. And so we got those permits, and now we've been working on planning the event, which takes place on Saturday, June fourth, so under three weeks now, I believe, which is crazy. And we've got sponsorships and vendors and a parade, and we have some, some groups from schools who are going to be participating, like the Brandon High School Choir is performing, and Ms. Kelsey with the yearbook has offered to come take pictures at the event. Which is really important to me because the, the reason that I wanted to do something. Yeah, so anyways, the reason that I wanted to do something like this was because I noticed that at school, there's a lot of kids who struggle to find a safe place, and I think that one of the most important things with having groups from not just our school, but schools around all of Oakland County, having groups from schools showing. When Mr. Brimer comes in with the choir and he brings them, we're performing, everyone can see that choir is a safe place for them to go. Which, when I was coming into middle school, would have been really helpful. I'm really gross. Okay. Okay, so that's really cool doing that. And we actually, since we started planning the event, we have, or I have made Abigail's Pride into a nonprofit organization recognized by the IRS, like the state government, which is really cool. So we plan on after this Pride Festival is over, continuing to do things and planning events and just making our community a safer place, especially for the youth. That's my target audience, because there's actually a statistic out there, and we don't know the numbers, but forty percent of LGBTQ youth die from suicide every year. And it shows that having one supportive adult in your life decreases that rate to a normal teen suicide statistic. And I think that having an event like this is somewhere where these kids and kids that I know that I go to school with every day can come and see those supportive faces and find those supportive adults. So, thank you for having me come here today. It's a really amazing opportunity.
Thank you for taking the time, and I just want to clarify, you are a sophomore, correct?
Yes.
So you are, two more years left of high school, and you started a nonprofit organization as a sophomore. I'm going to be forty-one years old, and I haven't even done that. So for you to do that at your age and be so wiser than you years and so connected, I commend you, and I am super excited. You gave me the opportunity to help out you. So thank you for including me and Marion. So I appreciate you and your whole team, and it's been a blast being a part of it, so.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, and I'm hoping, I think it was you that the Brandon Girls and Youth Assistance, this is about safe. This is about love. This is about just everybody having fun, we're all one people, and that we do no judgment. It's, it's a, it's just that safe, fun, loving place to keep in our minds and be there. And again, as you say now, even especially for our youth that are in our school district or wherever. So, but I appreciate, Mom, I'm gonna say this, you should be proud.
Thank you.
You should be proud. Does anybody else have anything to say or ask?
Just want to make sure, it's June fourth. What time does it start?
The parade is at eleven, and the rest of the festival runs from noon until five P M.
And it is in downtown Ortonville?
Yes.
And where do they see this? Is there a website, just Abigail's Pride?
Our website, you can find it at abigailspride.com. You can send me an email at abigailspride@gmail.com, and we have a Facebook page and an Instagram. Both are just at Abigail's.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Yes. Okay, next, we're going to go back to the Brandon High School Student Report. Come on up. And introduce yourself again.
Lisa, I'm even stuck on sophomore.
And I'm Kelly Crowe. I'm a junior this year.
Okay, welcome.
So we're just here to tell you what's going on in Brandon High School Student Council and just the school in general. So some recent activities that we have going on are Flint Metro League Math and Science Competition, which I did attend, and I competed in the trig geometry field. And we also had the Flint Metro League All Academic Team Competition, which was today. And we had Annalise Elliott, which is a senior, and Mallory Moore, another senior, competed. Tonight is our Boys Lacrosse League Championship Game, and it's also their senior night. And softball senior night was a few days ago, and the Suesco Play has been going on for the last few days. And here's a few pictures of those. That was our school award. We got second place as an overall school. And I think that was Mallory and Annalise, and those are just a few pictures of the musical.
So some upcoming school-wide activities would be senior finals, which are this week. Track regionals, which are the May twentieth. Girls Lacrosse Regionals, which is also May twentieth. Cheer Triads, which will be May twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. Prom, which is on May twenty-sixth. Senior banquet, oh, wait, sorry, senior breakfast is June third. Senior walk is also June third, and then some senior walk-in. Graduation is June fifth, and then senior sunset. The date is undecided, but it should be out soon, so.
And then this is just the banner that the Junior Class Council made for prom to advertise it. And then some things going on in Student Council, which we are both a part of, our Star Wars we had a couple weeks ago, which is just where we do these silly like pop actions for the seniors to get them excited for the end of the year. And our senior banquet for Student Council, which is just to celebrate them. And Teacher Appreciation Week was just last week or the week before, and we just went on our spirit trip, which the seniors did win. So they got to a spirit point for that. And we also just appointed our new cabinet for next year for Student Council. And our officers are Caleb Twain, is an upcoming junior, and he's for our treasurer. Reagan is our secretary next year, and she's an upcoming junior. Vice President is Olivia Hanson, and she's also an upcoming junior, and I am the president next year as an upcoming senior. And that's just a picture of most of the seniors from Senior Point.
So some more upcoming Student Council activities would be New Members Day, which is June second. New committee cycle, mostly like homecoming and pep. Shirt designs and school ball camp. We do have the new members. So the members are Tyler Green, which is an upcoming senior. Bryder Campow, which is an upcoming junior. Richard Hubbell, which is also an upcoming junior. Daniel Protivo, which is an upcoming sophomore. Delaney Reynolds, which is an upcoming sophomore, and so is Brooke Roberts, Ryan. I don't know how to say his last name. Sophia Conce.
Cause it's you.
Yeah. Cooper Acquah, Luke Hanson, Jason Norris, and Bryce Fong.
I think that's about all we have. Thank you so much for inviting us today, and I'm glad we got to share everything going on recently with our council and our school.
This was one of the more informative. We got names this time and pictures. That was very good. Thank you. Good. Is this your last meeting? Are you guys here next month also?
Um, I'm not sure.
Okay, sometimes in the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, well, hopefully we'll see you in June, and if not, we'll see you right in early in September.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, I have the bond update with Brian Smilnap. And a couple lists. We're going to talk about bond, the athletic facilities, and other bond, bond projects. Hi, Brian, welcome.
Good evening. Just a quick update on the bond projects. Excuse me. So we're still continuing to meet with our design committees. Harvey Swanson and the high school. Harvey Swanson, we're still meeting on floor finishes, the storage room kit, the storage cabinets in the classrooms, and also now we've started discussing the furniture for the classrooms. That's been quite, quite a good discussion there. It's going to be a big undertaking. So that's going to be the hardest project of all. It's going to be looking at designing the furniture for the, for the school. So we're headfirst into that. We've been meeting pretty much every week to stay on track. Good group of people, good feedback. We're doing, really working hard, and we're having good success on that. But it's an ongoing process. We're nowhere near done yet, so that'll continue. We've also done some preliminary work on the parking lots. That'll be constructed in two thousand twenty-three in the summer for the high school of Swanson. We've done some preliminary investigations, and then we've ordered some soil borings that'll be taken. Similar to what we did at the Oakwood property, where we had the real bad areas, we took soil borings to give us an indication of what's happening underneath, because when you see asphalt that's breaking up really bad, that means that something's wrong underneath. So we take soil borings in some areas to give us a representation of of what's happening. It'll help us design better. So that's underway. I've also met with Mark and some engineers on mechanical units and air handling problems at the high school that have been identified in the bond. So we'll be starting those designs soon as well. Once the school is out, we'll come off the building in more detail, get into the classrooms and so forth. But I had a good meeting with Mark to identify that school for work. Also, we met on the pool issue, the air handling equipment and the roofs, so we started our investigations on that as well. So again, when school is out, we can do investigations on that. We can continue. Those projects are all slated for summer twenty-three construction, so the schedule is that they would go out for bid in the fall. We come to you before Thanksgiving time to award those projects. So during the holidays and the winter, items can be, can be made, products can be bought, and so when June, June comes, then we'll have all of our items here, and then we can start construction as soon as school is out. So that's kind of the, the schedule that we're on right now. So we still have a lot of design to do over the summer months, a lot of investigation, and hopefully wrap up in the fall, be ready to go out for bids.
Great. Sounds good.
The other item I wanted to discuss today and present is the recommendation from the Athletic Committee, another committee that's been working very hard. We met several times regarding the exterior monies that was allocated in the bond for the play fields and recreation areas. We'd like to, I'd like to present the recommendation of the committee to the board today, because again, as I stated, the, the intent would be to start destruction documents over the summertime. So we're ready to go out in the fall, and then these will be constructed in summer twenty-three. So Maria's help here. I'm going to.
That's the right one?
That's the right one, yeah.
Okay, so the first site I wanted to talk about, stepping in my way, is the, the middle school area. There was three hundred fifty thousand dollars set aside for the improvements of the baseball area. The concept was to have the varsity baseball team start to play here at this field. Currently, they play at Harvey Swanson. Chris is not here, but there's been several problems over the past years. Mark, basically been losing the outfield. Keep having to move the, the outfield fence in because it's eroding. So it's been, they've been losing their distance down the foul line. So the concept was to move the varsity team to play here. So we've got improvements that were slated in the bond. They're kind of noted here. That's the minor fence improvements. We're going to remove the backstop and fencing along the side baselines and move it in about ten feet because we're very, very close to the, where the grade falls off, where the creek is again, in the back area. So we're going to move the fence, the baselines in, and the backstop in about ten feet. Gives us some more room behind. We're going to construct new dugouts. Be very similar to what the girls have over at the softball field currently. We also have, build a new bleacher pad. So the bleachers, who are currently, just one here and one here, they can be organized and placed behind the backstop, which is where the optimum place is for spectators. We're looking at also these blue lines here, erecting some, some netting, high netting to try and get our foul balls, catch them, because we're losing over a dozen or so balls a game in, in practicing that get hit over into the creek. So that'll be included as well. And then the blue here is the hard surface walkway that would be installed for the parking lot down along the softball field to provide access, barrier-free access for parents and spectators to the games. The green here is electricity that's going to have to come out of the ITech area and feed a new scoreboard over in left field, and then also bring some power down for the scorers by the dugouts as well. Some minor field improvements, new dust and, and crapping of the baseball infield for definition. So all this area here is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Actually, we're on the budget a little bit. So the other area that we had in the bond was to construct an addition onto ITech for outside toilet rooms for spectators. And we took a hard look at that, and we feel that we can achieve that for less money by putting another doorway in the backside here and utilizing the bathrooms that are inside ITech right now. Installing some doors interior to basically have a control point for after-hours, so people who come in couldn't wander around the building. They could just go in and use the bathrooms. And we feel, what did I do, Maria? I'm sorry. Okay, we feel that we can do that, and then take some of that money that was supposed to be for the electricity needs that we're going to have to do to feed the power. So we're going to kind of, we're still going to provide bathrooms, and actually, we can get more toilet areas, because if we use the toilets inside, there's more water closets than if we construct. For the budget we had, if we construct a new addition out here, we could get one whole piece for male and female. But by doing the work inside the building and allowing outside access, we can actually have more facilities available for men and women during a game. So all this came out, actually, we're under budget on this one, by about fifteen thousand dollars when, when all this is combined. The toilet area combined with the, with the ball field, we, we're, we're under budget on that for our scope. So we're, we're very happy with how this all worked out. Again, we had a lot of meetings with the Athletic Committee. They did a great job. We went back and forth on a lot of things, but this is what the recommendation is from the committee for the board for the middle school. Thank you. Any questions?
So is the electrical, are there going to be lights out there, or is there already?
No lights. It should just be for power for the scoreboard in this area. This would be new. It does not exist right now, and it will bring some power down here for the scorers as they obviously connect from the scoreboard to the knockout area. Okay. The other area is the high school, which and also quite a large budget. The budget all in at this, at this location was about two million dollars. Involved improvements to the soccer field, the football field, the track, and tennis court areas. So we had a lot of discussion with this. Currently, your turf here at the field, so this would just be replacing the turf with new, you're, you're at the end of your, your life on the turf field. You're only good for about fifteen, fourteen years or so, depending upon their uses. So what the committee would like to recommend is that at the football field area, they replace the turf. This area here, this outside the end zone, this is called a D-zone, because it's kind of shaped like a D. So we're looking at making this turf, because this is now asphalt early right now. A lot of high schools have been doing this because they use that area for practices. They usually put agility ladders and things up. They actually straight them in. But you do a lot of lineman drills up here in this area, and that frees up the field for more your backs and receivers type drills. So this has become very popular to use the D-zones for actually football as opposed to having asphalt. The, the south area here would still say asphalt, because this is the high jump area and the long jump area for track. So that'll still stay, and then, and represented in the purple here is we'll put a new track surface over the top of the existing one for your track, and they'll re-streep it. And then this area here is actually, sits above off-screen, but there's the pole vault area. And then a long jump area, where we would resurface those areas as well up here in that area. So that'll go along with the track, because it's, it's the same type of surfacing. So it'll happen at the same time. Soccer field improvements, we have much, much, much discussion on this, went back and forth. And what the, currently, you have a grass field. I think Mark said it's the largest grass field, I think, in the Chevrolet, correct, for soccer? And currently, boys play on it and girls play on it. But being grass, the problem that we always have, a lot of people love to play on grass, however, it gets beat up. And of course, with Mother Nature and rains and so forth, usually have, my son played travel soccer, so he was a goalie. So he sat in his mud puddle right there in front of the goal. And then, but usually, the, the problem with the grass is if it's used a lot in year-round, it does not have time to recover for the next season if it's used consistently. And that's part of the problem that we're, that we're having. So what we would like to recommend is that we replace the grass with a turf field, which is shown in the green here. It would have under drainage, just like the football field. So no matter what range or whatever happens on it, it would drain that field and be playable. And then do some other improvements here, some, some netting behind the goal. You see, we're not, we're not turfing all the way from fence to fence. We're just turfing just outside the playing area, so you still have some grass area around the perimeters, around the back. We do need to do some improvements where the spectators come in, where the tickets are. We need to concrete that area and this roadway, because it's underwater a lot. We have to improve that. And also, there's no hard surface to get from the ticket area to the bleacher area. So we'll improve that, so we have barrier-free access for spectators to get to the bleachers. Your bleachers are another problem. They're not up to code right now. They're not accessible. They don't qualify for any type of ADA requirement. And we took a hard look at this. And the current visitors bleachers at Swanson are up to code. They have the closed risers, the ramping, the ADA, the companion seating. So what we're looking to do is take the bleachers on the visitor's side of Harvey Swanson, bring them over and erect them here in place of the current bleachers. It does two things. Number one, it's cheaper than buying new. And the other thing, which is our big problem nowadays, is procurement of materials. We don't have to wait for new bleachers to be constructed and delivered, which is our biggest problem with construction nowadays, is we just can't get materials here. So we're going to take advantage of the bleachers at Swanson and move them over and re-erect them here at this location. It's going to work out cheaper in cost and also you get a better result, and then you'll be fully accessible for spectators to come in, get to the bleachers. Again, there's ramping, there's ADA seating, companion seating, so you'll be in full compliance. Some other concrete that they want to have back here where the teams are, back at the stadium, where they sit in front of the stadium. See what else is in the stadium here.
The tennis courts, I think, on the bottom.
Tennis courts are off-screen. They'll have a resurface on the tennis courts as well. We have to do some fencing over there too, to add a couple gates. But that'll also be in the mix. So the good news is, so we had about a two million dollar overall budget with everything all in, and we're at about million eight, three, so we're under budget at, at this location too. So again, after all the talking with the committee and going back and forth, we felt this was the best way to move forward for the students. And if there's any questions, I can answer for you.
I don't have any. You're looking at starting the bids in the fall also?
Yeah, so this would be similar timeframe. We would design it over summer. Revisit it one more time in the spring with, with Chris and staff and the committee one more time. Be out for bid and awarded prior to Thanksgiving. They would start construction on the soccer field in early May or late April. And then as soon as the track season's done in early June, then they would jump over here. So it's going to take them a longer time to prep this field, obviously, because it's not set up for drainage right now. So the month of May, April and May, they'd be working on this field, ripping that up, getting the under drainage in. the month of May, April and May, they'd be working on this field, ripping that up, getting the under drainage in, getting the pad built. And then when the football field becomes available, then they would come in in June and July and then turf both fields. So the schedule would be by beginning part of August, the football field would be ready to go because those are going to start practicing for football. So that's the schedule is that this this would both happen, start in early spring of twenty-three. By August, it should be wrapped up and ready for football season.
Okay, and we, you talked about that athletic bond committee. That's a committee that was has two board members, I think Chris Dynas, but I know Melissa Clark is one and Kim Gugler Smith. Melissa, go ahead and tell us what the came out of it.
So Brian was not kidding when we spent countless hours and hours and hours trying to come up with how to use our dollars wisely. What was the significant needs? ADA compliance was a huge thing, making sure that we're able to have just a well-rounded usage of our athletic. So I want to thank the committee because we spent a minimum fifteen hours, I feel like, on this, just to make sure we were we were being well-rounded and everything. So just thinking the the coaches that were present for it, Chris Dynas, our athletic director, was a huge part of it. Brian was a huge part of it. And we had another individual, I don't remember his name, Bruce. Bruce was on there and he was an expert. So Kim and I got a chance to really dive in with them. And and everything that we've done has not been done in haste. It's been methodical and we've, you know, lost sleep on it and everything. So but we did spend a lot of time making sure we were signing our bond dollars correctly. So what Brian's presenting to you is is a, I can support a well-rounded thought out process.
Thank you, Melissa. And then Melissa's committee brought it to basically to the next committee, which was the, go ahead, Greg.
I just got a question. As a township resident and as a triple A and a varsity baseball coach for twenty-five years, I was the last coach that had travel teams out here for baseball, which my teams were the feeder programs through the varsity. And I don't know who was on the committee, but the field that you're couple things. One is baseball in this district is a dying sport. Baseball is way down. You guys have not had a freshman team in I don't know how many years. The numbers are dwindling. You have no feeder program for your high school sports teams or the junior high. And we talked for years about the current field behind the middle school. And it was always talked about flipping that field around if that field was ever going to be a varsity team or varsity field because the sun is in the catcher's eyes and the hitters all leave me long on that field. I don't understand why you would take that much of a dollar figure into improving that field and not turn the field around where that it's not as issue with the sun and with a program that's baseball program that's that's
Yes.
Really taking a hit. I mean, Diane, I coached your son.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
We played on that field and so did my travel teams for years. And that field has always been a problem because of where home plate is. Home plate should be on the opposite side. It's a disaster for the young kids and a a safety risk and it always has been. So I don't know what baseball minds have looked at that baseball field, but I've been around the program for twenty-five years.
And Greg, what they'll do is they'll probably go out now that that's maybe the first time that that was heard.
He looked at before he put that kind of money into it.
But I know that, like I said, there were coaches, at least on the athletic bond part of it. Yeah, the baseball coach was out there, but yeah. Yeah, thank you. And yes, absolutely. For years I've been doing this. Um, next, uh, I the Anhok Facilities Committee, which is that got Jeff and myself when they brought this recommendation. We not only reviewed it with some other people, go ahead, Jeff.
I commend Brian for the thought process and Lieutenant Glover and the thought of, hey, it's, does everything get looked into it? I like the thought of the baseball field, relax in the restrooms, saving the monies, money goes elsewhere. Same thing with bleachers being relocated, reused, refurbished, be able to allocate more monies to prove a little bit more. With saying all of that, I know the facility committee could support this looking forward and then maybe taking a consideration of the sun. And the one comment about the lights on the field, will there be maybe enough power to be added down the future, be proactive with it? Going backwards with it. But yeah, the facility committee can support what's presented and looking forward to seeing what's the ultimate designs when it's all said and done.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate it. Okay, any other questions for Jeff, Melissa, Brian? Okay, next. Thanks, Brian. I appreciate it. Next, Jane, you're gonna talk about the other.
Yeah, yeah, this will be real quick. Um, we're on track. We are getting in the tech contract served this time. On site, they can deliver it. We have the product that we wanted, make sure we got that. So right now, everything is proceeding as it's supposed to be. Um, they're gonna start working. Things are good there. The classroom display devices, um, it's a huge project set for the summer twenty-two, twenty-three. As you're aware, there's been a technology committee for the bond technology committee. That project, several teachers representing each building are on that committee. Our new Thomas, our new technology director has taken the time and ran with it. He's got demos set up at the ITech currently. The teachers on the committee are going over on, he's here this week, like two to four something. He's trying to, you know, be able to accommodate all of the teachers, the different buildings. And they're reviewing and then looking at the equipment and then they'll be making their recommendations. So that part is underway. And then in the fall, each building will have two two displays or demos that the other teachers in the building will be able to look at. And I asked him how exactly that's gonna work and he said, you can't. Like, okay, you know, everybody's teaching in their classroom. So in any rate, it's doing very well there with, you know, time to escalate it, which was a surprise. You know, it was a, we really, um, he he was really good at all of this, but I think we're in good shape. And our new director of technology, he said he's picked up the time, we're moving forward.
Great, thank you, Jane. Any questions for Jane? Okay, thank you. Having none, now we move on to superintendent report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We do have a new high school council to replace Mike Brennan. I've asked Mr. Stevens if he would please introduce our new high school counselor. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, thank you for everybody. The teacher shortage and a counselor shortage, I don't know how we keep getting so lucky with having these amazing people come to us from Brandon. This is Ryan Bellumo. And Brian actually started with us in August before the last school year started as an intern. Came in, he told me, hey, just come in a couple days a week, work with us, work with the counselors. Well, he just came in every single day. And as a matter of fact, me and Mike Brennan, we were sitting there most days going, all right, you want to leave? She's still here. We don't want to leave before him. And so and so he just goes to show you what kind of work ethic Ryan has. It it's been amazing in the short time that he's been with us. As an intern, he's already built great relationships with our kids. Many of our, many of our kids. So I'm gonna turn over him just to tell you a little bit about himself and and his past experiences. So.
Hi, everybody. As Mr. Stevens says, my name is Brian Bellumo. It's a pleasure to be talking about myself this evening to everybody. As introducing myself, I like to kind of first talk about some of my educational background. I first started being really interested in helping children once I was in my bachelor's degree, learning about psychology and specific classes at normal child psychology and developmental psychology. Once I learned about some of those specific things, I really kind of told myself and at night, I really kind of spoke to myself, saying this is something I really wanted to do. So after my bachelor's degree, I really kind of had a discussion with everybody in my family and decided to pursue a dual master's degree in clinical mental health and school counseling. My dual master's degree was at Oakland University, where I recently have been a graduate. And back in the fall, as Mr. Stevens said, I did my internship here at Brandon. I fell in love with everything here. I'm really glad that I have this job. And I was even telling Mr. Stevens before this meeting, that I went home after my internship, very sad and said I would do anything to come back here to work. I really fell in love with the staff, the students and everything about this community. That's really all I have to say. If you have any questions or anything, please ask.
I don't have any questions. I just, great to have you aboard and welcome. Appreciate it.
Hey, thank you. Moving on, the letter B, School Resource Officer. I've worked out a tentative agreement with Jason Rumble, the township supervisor, as well as Lieutenant Glover, our substation commander. And I have included the terms of the TA in your packet. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but there are a couple of noteworthy changes. First of all, I'm recommending a two-year contract for school year twenty-two, twenty-three, as well as school year twenty-three, twenty-four. I think it works much better for Lieutenant Glover, as well as the township supervisor for planning purposes. Showing that we are committed to a two-year arrangement. Also, our school resource officer position would move from four hours or twenty hours a week to eight hours a day, forty hours a week. Overtime costs would remain the same. We pay overtime costs this year. So if we ask our school resource officer to work a Friday night football game or basketball game, we would pay overtime. And that's what we've done in the past. So that's really nothing new. We've committed to paying fifty percent of the annual costs, which would include salary benefits and so on. Giving you the cost to do so, it really is about twenty thousand dollars more than we're currently paying. We're at about fifty-six thousand. So we'd add about another twenty thousand dollars to have a school resource officer that's with us eight hours a day, full-time. So that's really the essence of of the contract. Do any of you board members have any questions for me? Need any further clarification about this particular position?
No, I just want to say thank you to Brandon Township. Thank you to Greg Glover, our substation, Pence, everybody, you know, Dr. Richards for working this out because this is very important to us and to have your presence in our school buildings as much as you can.
In prior by splitting those hours over the years, the contract here has always been an issue for our department because it's always year to year. It's always been a question of, you know, are we going to keep the school liaison? Are we not going to have a school liaison? And it it got to the point to that that my bosses were at one time, a few years ago, were were actually ready to to literally just give up on it. They said, we're doing, this is the only district in the county out of all of our substations that it's a year to year issue every year. And the problem with that is it it takes a special officer to want to be the school resource officer, somebody that that wants to be dedicated to schools. It kind of takes them away from real police work, what most of them got into it. And when you don't have something that's a a more lengthy contract, that officer doesn't know from year to year whether he's going to have a home or is he going to have to bump to another substation somewhere. So that's the problem for us. And if I want to keep a quality person dedicated to this school, I I need something longer than a year. And that's something that myself and Gary talked about in at length. It was an issue for the township and it's been an issue for the department. You know, I mean, we have, we were splitting, you know, a twenty-hour, where he was in the schools twenty hours a week, twenty hours at the substation. The school has always gotten the better half of that. You know, I get I get asked every year at a township meeting, when I do my year end report, who's getting the better half of that? I can tell you because I'm here. If I don't have anything going on that I need a detective for, then I make sure he's at the school. So the school has always gotten the better half of that deal, just because I've I've made it that way.
And thank you. I appreciate you explaining because for us, you know, we sit, we don't realize that we're being short sighted maybe a little bit, that or that would say, and this is a win-win for all of us. Like you said, we get quality people. We get them in and I just appreciate it.
Yeah, it's it's, you guys, and I talked about it way after the Oxford shooting. There's a need for it. I mean, you need somebody that's dedicated five days a week. I I've never, the the twenty-hour week has worked. But it needs to be five days a week. And I've said that for quite a while.
Absolutely. Thank you for working not only with the township and with us on this. Appreciate it, Greg. Thank you.
Win-win is exactly what I was, words I was going to use. So I want to thank Lieutenant Glover for working with us, also Detective Pence, who's here with us, who is our school resource officer. I think we we've got some good things in mind for the coming year. I think it's a it's a great investment. When we talk later about security, safety and planning, I I think this is this is a must. And so based on all my conversations, based on what I presented, I recommended the board accept the terms of its TA later in this meeting. The infamous tractor. I want to talk a little bit about about the tractor. I'm asking for your support this evening to purchase a new tractor for a couple of reasons. First of all, I want to say that I think the tractor can help us with things like moving large landscape boulders. Help us rotate to large areas like the wastewater treatment plant, the sand beds, as well as removing brush, large trees, other items for the property. Can help us pile and move salt, remove and install sewage lip pumps, pallets. Use the way I turn our trucks. And I think there are many more items that I could list. But most importantly, a new tractor would help us remove snow during the winter months. And I really think this is a must for us as a district. On the day when Tammy fell, and you may recall when when she did fall, I think her first day back to work was Monday. But she had, she had broken several bones in her in several places and she's still got, I think she's got screws in a steel plate in her leg. But we received a lot of snow during a very short amount of time. It was a concentrated period of time. We couldn't keep up with plowing and insulting. It just was not possible. That snow was coming down. It was a really unique, perfect storm. It wasn't a good situation, but it allowed me an opportunity to talk with Mark Evans and also Jan Meek about what we can do to maybe improve because there are situations like that that I think will arise during during the winter. We have three maintenance personnel, maintenance workers, plowing and salting right now. And if one should have an accident, maybe slide into ditch on the way to work early in the morning or come down with some sort of an illness, maybe appendicitis, or any number of things, if we're down to two, there is no way that we can properly clear the parking lots and the sidewalks. It just can't be done. So I think it was maybe a couple of meetings ago, I I talked about maybe contracting services with the with maybe outsourcing some services. So I I did, we did solicit some bids and you have a copy of that in your packets. Snow plowing bids, we have bids from four different vendors. I think the costs are probably self-explanatory. I mean, the cheapest one was about thirty thousand dollars. And the downside is that that was a two-inch minimum. So they're not going to touch anything until we have at least two inches of snow. And we know we need something more than that. Also, the bids did not include any salt. So you'd have to provide, pay for the salt. You also have to, we'd still have to spread it. They're not doing sidewalks. Couple of other points I want to make is that you might, you might need to have a couple of pushes during a school day. One might not be enough. You might have to come back and do it later in the day. And this, these costs here, they didn't include snow plowing at the bus garage, even the service drive. So I I think that, you know, outsourcing maybe was a good idea. But I I still think that these are very expensive and it's a perpetual cost. You've got to pay this every year. And I think it'd be better to invest that money elsewhere. I also put in your packets a bin for the new tractor. The the old tractor, which was the new tractor, has been sold. But Dick Coulter was able to find another one exactly like the one we had a quote on earlier. And it'll be about twenty-eight hundred dollars more than than the the other bid. So anyway, we have a fresh bid for you there. Let's see if there was anything else I wanted to, I don't think there's anything else I wanted to share. But we do have a blade, a sixteen-foot blade right now that we can use. And Mark Evans is convinced that we can cut our snow plowing time in half. So really what I want to do is I don't want to spend too much more time on on this. I think I've given you an adequate update. I think probably maybe three, four weeks ago. But anyway, I want to open up the floor for questions that you might have regarding the tractor or any clarification that I might be able to provide for the board.
Anybody have question?
I just want to take the time to thank you for answering the questions that were brought up, that were really addressed and well-rounded. So thank you for for doing that. I appreciate it.
Glad I was able to do that. Mark, was there anything I missed? Okay, so I'm going to recommend and you'll see in the agenda that the board purchased the new tractor.
Thank you.
And you'll policy updates, try to move quickly because I'm trying to move quickly, because Lieutenant Glover, who is here along with Detective Pence, as well as Mark Evans for the closed session, said that if I don't move along, I might be spending the night in a holding cell. Why he would say that was sort of rude and, you know. Anyway, let me just go through the Neola updates just quickly for you. First of all, the first packet, 36.2, is from February 2022. It's the most recent set of Neola policy updates. I'm going to ask you tonight to take action on this particular set. You had it last month for first reading. I could go through, but it's really, I think, self-explanatory. I hope my summary helped you understand the recommendations that are being made. I didn't see anything in here that was noteworthy or earth-shattering. Do you have any questions about any of these policies for February 2022? Do you want? Okay. All right, then I'll close that piece. You have another set, which is 36.1. Now, this is from September of 2021. This one didn't get passed in the first semester, but I told President Salter I'd be willing to try to work with all of you to get this one processed. So I want to make a couple of notes here. This packet is a little thicker, and you're going to have a lot more reading to do, and you're going to have to make some decisions on some of the options that are available to you. But just a reminder, if you look at the summary at the top, if it's a new policy, you have to look at it in its entirety. You don't have any new policies, so that's a non-issue. For revisions, if a policy is marked as revised, the changes have been marked in gold, I'm sorry, bold green ink. That's adding material, okay? And that's all you have to look for. And crossed out in bold red ink is what they're taking out. So really, that's all you have to do, all you have to look at when you go through and look at any of the policies that are revisions, just revised. And I have it highlighted for you in yellow next to the actual policy, so you know. Replacement, if a policy is marked as replacement, there's been enough changes to justify a complete, clean replacement policy, and you need to review that in its entirety, just as though it was a new policy. And you have one of them in your packet. Okay? Under, and I'm going to go through that with you in just a second. I have a note here, although policy 7450 is marked as revised by Neola, it should be considered new to Brandon, because it was never adopted by the board in the past. So that's Board Policy 7450. So you'll need to take a look at that and read from the beginning to the end. Okay? That's 7450. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when I get to that piece. Some of you have already looked through this packet and have made a couple of suggestions, recommendations. First of all, under Bylaw 0167.3, Public Participation at Board Meetings, you'll note that I had checked letter G, and I think that based on feedback that I've received, I'm going to unchecked letter G. So make a note of that in your packet, make sure you review that, and make sure you're all okay with that, because that is a change from what's in your packet. Okay? On the second page of my summary, Policy 5722, School Sponsored Publications and Productions, that is a replacement policy. So you need to go through. This is, this is the one I want to spend a little bit more time on.
The number seven again?
This is 5722. My notes are somewhere, I guess I've lost my notes. But anyway, I can do this, 74, sorry, 5722. You need to, to look at the policy, like I said, from beginning to end, and note that there are a number of different options. There is a toolkit that Neola provided. It's a nine-page toolkit. Read that first. It's in your packet. It will help you make decisions related to this particular policy. You'll be asked to make some choices between non-public forum, limited public forum, and a traditional public forum. Carly and the administrators, which be the principals, and Diane Zidane, and I all went through this, and we were looking at this more from a non-public forum. So this would be, we're looking at this not to limit free speech, but to provide guidance and direction with respect to students' publications and so on. Okay? And let's see, I wanted to, I'm not sure what I did with that.
It's underneath here.
It had to be papers. No, that's another one. Anyway, so does that make sense? Go through and look at the toolkit first, read it, and then it will help you when you look at Policy 5722. And based on the feedback from administrators, it is in keeping with our current practice. Okay? And it's more of the conservative approach. Finally, 7450, this was the policy I referred to earlier that was not adopted. You need to go through in its entirety. I will say that Jan did go through and read it from the beginning to the end, and it's based on her recommendations, and again, based on current practice. Okay? Any initial thoughts regarding the first reading?
What is 7450? What is it called again?
Property inventory.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
All right, anything else with first reading of this packet? All right. Good. On project change orders. Again, you have a document in your packet, so hopefully you've had a chance to review it. I am recommending that, based on the recommendation from a construction manager or architect or engineer, Superintendent, Executive Director, Finance and Business Services jointly, be authorized to approve and execute construction contract change orders. It's not uncommon for superintendents or designated to have that authority so that we can keep the projects moving along. And I hope that we've provided enough conditions and limitations that you feel comfortable allowing us to make those decisions regarding change orders. The one point I want to make is that we use 10% as the threshold, because that's what the board has already done. You've set 10% as the threshold, and that is a part of the contingency funds. So that's what we have used as the threshold. Any questions about this particular change order authorization request? Hillary? Okay, thank you. All right. I hope that will keep me out of
Still got one more.
We have one more. But we've had a number of trouble cases over the last couple of months now, and I think probably over the last, maybe the course of the year. And we have another one this evening. Diane Zidane is here to talk about our preschool programs. Diane, floor is yours.
Thank you. I provided you guys with some of our extra gear ones that we do for the preschool. So we provide those, all our students get pictures taken in the phone, and then they again get pictures taken in the screen for makeups and kids that are new, and also graduation pictures. So they all get a Brandon blue cap, and they get graduation pictures taken. So I know, I feel like we're running a little late. So I, a picture is more than a thousand words. How's that? So our, this is my 10th year as the Director of Preschool Programs, and when I got here, there were three classrooms, and we're up to seven. And we've seen the last, I think, we'll be able to eight by next year. So of our options, we offer preschool programs for two-year-olds to 40-year-olds. Once they're 25, by December 1st, we encourage them to go into kindergarten or junior kindergarten, whatever is most appropriate for that student. We offer full-day programs and half-day programming. We have programs for those to pay tuition. We have free programs and then tuition assistance through a couple of different programs. Our team is, these are our teachers, Sarah Campbell, Elise, Glennie, Chelsea Powers, Melinda Cave, and Connie Sarek, and April Rambusch, and Stacy Martin. Three are new this year, and four have returned, and then Joanne. Zackson is our Early Childhood Specialist Teacher. There is teams with all of those teachers to support students who have different needs. Some of the special events, you'll see some of the pictures of that. We have a leprechaun scavenger hunt occurred in some classrooms. We have an event with muffins with maams. It used to be maams, but now it's maams. And last year, we had to send everything home because of COVID. This year, we headed outside over a beautiful pavilion that we have with our brand-new tables. We were able to go to a trip to the farm this year, played a little bit in the mud because it was raining, you know? But that was probably half the fun for the students. And we get to go back to the zoo this year. So they just opened up classroom visits to the zoo. And then we, in the fall, we have an event for dudes and the children, and their favorite dude comes and they build things. This year, we also sent it because it was in the fall, and with COVID, we were still being very cautious, as none of our students could get vaccines and susceptible. And we use the high school curriculum in all of our classrooms. There's a daily routine. They plan, do, and review. They do a live group and small group. They focus on the learning environment, child and adult interactions is the main teaching mode. Active participation with adult children with each other. Here, assess, continuous assessment is called the CORE, which is the, excuse me, observational record, child observational record. And the staff actually types in what the student says to identify that they've met their goal or not, and then key development indicators. And that's primarily our curriculum, talking about initiative planning, problem solving. The children reflect on what they've done, where they've gone, they make plans for it. We work on social emotional development, and at this stage, it's very important, especially if they've been home for a whole year and two without interaction with others. Language literacy, communication, physical development, math, creative arts, science and technology, and social studies. And we make it all fun. Some of the other activities we've done, you'll see some pictures of carnation experiments. We order chrysalis for butterflies, and they see them grow up and turn into butterflies, making tornadoes, playing outside, making Cat in the Hat hats, exploring worms, which I had a student who, he was really angry that we didn't have worms every day. So I'm, so they said, go outside and find those worms, you know? Recycling materials and reading Billy Likes and the Three Bears, and finding the beads and the letters in their porridge. So this was a couple of pictures of muffins with maams happening the last couple of weeks. They make sugar scrub, they plant plants for their mothers. We usually do it around Mother's Day, or they're my aunts who ever came. And then they have a picture and a project that they actually give to them, yes, credit there, thanking their moms. Young scientists, their eyes doing something, building and collecting, and those are the carnations we talked about, exploring the worms. I'm telling you, just give a pile of worms, we would be happy. And they enjoyed it. And growing some plants, putting the seeds in. The center picture, you see, there's actually directions for the students actually to plant. So they're going through the directions verbally in the pictures, and then they're working on measuring some of the trees. We're hoping to get more trees next year. Wasn't the right time to plant right now. This is the butterfly metamorphosis, and they love it. Sometimes we have to buy another one because didn't quite make it, but so far, I think we're doing really well with our butterflies. I had to actually, they're making clouds, and they, the drips into the water, and it goes through the clouds, and it goes into the water. And so they're making rain, then they're dyeing the flowers. We've got little scientists on our hands. We talked about recycling, and they've made, you know, dinosaurs under recycling, they're exploring and observing and measuring and being scientists. So this was a leprechaun, magic leprechaun rock, and it has to do with vinegar, and after everything dissolved, there is a gold coin in there. So I know, here's a tornado. I'm like, okay, guys. One day I got a call up, who has two-liter bottles? Maybe two-liter bottles for, obviously, the tornado experiment, which, you know, my children too, be excited about learning, and these are ways to make it. And this year, we've always had Ms. Fran, we did it over Zoom for the last two days, last two years, excuse me. This year, she was able to get back this spring. So Ms. Fran comes in to Storytime, does activities with it. Everyone's smiling, probably all have done Storytime with Ms. Fran and your kids. So it's nice that she's able to come back. And then we, of course, do literacy, individual patterns, Cat in the Hat. They made their own hats and figured out patterns. And this is the Three Bears, and they had their porridge, Billy Likes and the Three Bears, and in their porridge were their letters to their names. They had to find their letters, they had to use the tweezers to get the letters out. So we have Find Motor going on, and we have literacy going on. They have, they use the Omega Find lessons to be able to find them. It makes it fun. Writing and reading, we're doing anything to get them to other letters and numbers and using fun things to match up those letters and writing skills. Again, using other kinds of things. So we've got candy, they're putting on the letters of their first name. We're using letters that are on the tables, and you know, this is part of their, when they get to go and explore, they get to pull them out, and that's part of their, they call it work time. It looks like playtime to you, but it's work time. Some more math skills, of counting, putting things together, lining things up, counting the diagonals, measuring and using them, and the note pictures, making sure they're balanced, and then putting puzzles together in with the shape of triangles. Lots of Find Motor and Gross Motor activities in the classroom, out of the classroom, building towers, it all takes Find Motor. And then using fishing on the ground with their fishing poles. And I'm sure it looks like a mess, but that is their artwork in the middle there, and I'm sure it was on their refrigerator the next day. Here's some more Gross Motor activities, using lots of equipment and music and songs to do that. I don't know if you've ever had magic tiles, but they're like the best invention since sliced bread. I think I have, I should buy stock in there, because all my nieces and nephews have them, and every classroom, every year, and buying more, like, where do these things go? Oh, we just need more. We just need more, because everyone loves them, as well as probably most of us would too. And we love our playground. And they're playing bangles and sliding down the slides. And our representative told us, we have the largest sandbox ever in the entire state of Michigan that he's built, and they love it. They love the sandbox, slides, and the activities. And you might recognize some of the students, some of our students are our own, our own teacher's kids come to our program. And what's new, we're going to, our enrollment is up. It's a wonderful thing. We're like, we closed classroom, we didn't have enough space, and so we had already 12 extra students, so we had a waiting list and got approval to open another full-day classroom. So we'll be looking for another teacher and associate teacher. And then recently, a new grant has come out, and with that grant, we're going to work on supporting three-year-olds to attend preschool with some tuition assistance. Any questions?
No. Excellent. Love the pictures. It's really good to get the update, and it's award-winning.
Yes, we're still a five-star.
Yeah, exactly. For many years, since you've been here. Thank you. Anybody else have questions or comments?
Did I make my six?
I know. Thank you. Thank you. Diane, very much. Thank you. Okay, next, public comments and questions on Agenda business?
I don't, I do not have any virtually.
Okay, none virtually, no hands are up. None here? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving to our next item. We have the approval of the consent agenda. Could I get a motion, please?
Will the Brandon Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented?
Thank you. Any questions concerned? Having none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes, yes. Hillary Stokowski, yes. Jeff Zilke, yes. Diane Solka, yes.
Next, we have our information and discussion items, board reports. So you have open school budgets. I know, you've got a lot.
Yes, so we, as you know, every year, Open Schools Board of Education, they do their school budget for the following year, so 2022, 23. For those that don't know, Open Schools is primarily funded by property tax dollars, and Open Schools is our ISD that kind of helps us support programs and resources that are beyond the scope of our district. is our ISD that kind of helps us support programs and resources that, um, are beyond the scope of our district borders. Uh, some of the things that I'll just give you a couple of things because even though I can get a jail ticket today, I don't want to take much time. Um, I would like to just kind of showcase a couple of things that this budget is kind of focusing on this, uh, that they're presenting. Uh, one of the big things is social and emotional wellbeing and mental health support, which we have all talked about, um, at length. And so that is something that they are spending a lot of the budget dollars towards for Oakland Schools. Another one is career and technical education. Um, you know, top 10 and 10 years goals and strategies is kind of with the Department of Education for the state. So they are kind of coinciding with that and focusing on our Oakland County, uh, students for their techno education. Focusing on cybersecurity, um, and shared services. So with that being the normal service model, they're looking to improve technology, instruction, truancy services, those types of things. So it is my, um, hope and recommendation that I am asking that the board approve, uh, today, the Oakland Schools budget for the fiscal year 2022 and 2023.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions for Melissa regarding the Oakland Schools budget? Having none. Next we have now the Oakland Schools Board of Education biannual election that's coming up. Melissa again.
Okay, uh, so we have an election for the Oakland Schools School Board, and that is our governing Board of Education School Board for Oakland Schools. They help with all of the school districts in Oakland County. And so I am asking that we do a resolution for the board to designate myself. I am the Oakland Schools representative to the Brandon School District. Um, as its representative and Diane Salter as its alternative representative to serve on a 2022 electoral body responsible for electing members to the Oakland Schools Intermediate School District Board of Education. Um, after reviewing the candidates, uh, Diane, I both sat through and can watch the Zoom, um, Q and A's with them. We would like the board to support the candidate Charlie Gandy Thompson and candidate Stephen Gottlieb. I hope I said that right. If I did not, I apologize. For the two positions on the Oakland Schools Intermediate School District Board of Education, which is a term of six years ending on June 30th, 2028. Lastly, the board directs its representative Melissa Clark to vote for candidate Charlie Gandy Thompson and candidate Stephen Gottlieb, at least on the first ballot, taken at the June 6th, 2022 election. This is an in-person election, so I will be, um, going down to Pontiac to Oakland Schools to cast that vote in person.
Yep, thank you. And just so you know, we're hoping she'll be there. They're open till at least, I think, seven thirty.
Five thirty to seven thirty. We do have a, uh, important meeting that day here. So as soon as we get that done, I will hopefully race to Pontiac to cast it.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it, Melissa. Any questions for Melissa regarding the election at Oakland Schools School Board? Okay, having none. Next is our finance report. Jan, you're up again.
Tonight I'm going to, um, review a few of the assumptions that we've been working on for the, um, adoption of the this year 2023 budget. Typically, we have this discussion, um, we'll see where we are this year. Um, as you know, June, it's, uh, state law that the board adopts a budget for next year. So what, I just want to go through this quickly. Um, the first one, the instructional or the proposed reductions to next year's budget. And there's an asterisk by the instructional staff adjustments. I got a whole pile up in here. Um, the reduction of, uh, 93, 438, I have in that. The asterisk represents, and this is where this, all this federal money is going to start to make things a little bit muddy. We've got four FTE, four teachers this year that are moving from, uh, federal funding back into general fund. And then we have two teachers that are moving from general fund into our SR3 money, couple of resignations. Um, so it may look like we're reducing more, but because we're losing some of that federal funding, the savings is not really, it's not as, as much as we would have liked. So that's the first number, the 93. The retirements, uh, basically we're going to replace those two retirements. But, um, we're planning on a savings since the teachers retiring or, you know, the top scale typically. So that's where that number comes in. And then, uh, central office, we, um, we are not replacing our, our front desk position. Um, that person worked part-time this year, so I had to do the savings from this year into next year. On the other side, um, proposed investments or increases to the budget are hard, are medical, uh, hard cap increase from the state. Uh, 1.2% next year. Um, salary adjustments is a number that we've put in. Uh, we've got a new superintendent coming in. Um, we've got to central office school type position for the whole year, um, our HR manager. And, uh, and then various other salaries. So that number there, um, is, is a number that represents historically, but that number could, um, there could be some change there. The additional special education teacher Diane has, um, met with us and her numbers are increasing. And, um, she has asked for another special ed teacher next year. A transportation contract increased two and a half percent. That's, um, that's already been agreed to. And then next year, as was talked about earlier, we're going to be providing additional security to the district, uh, a, a full-time resource officer. Plus I added in money for the extra premier guards for the entire year. We started with the extra guards, uh, this year in December. But next year we're gonna have that from the beginning. So, uh, investments a little over 900,000 if we net the two. We're looking at a proposed expenditure increase next year of a little over 700,000. On the revenue side, this is where it's always the expenditures we have a lot more control over. On the revenue side, two things, the state funding, it looks like we're going to get at least a $450 increase. Uh, the conference hours that a couple of weeks ago said we could get five to $600, but the governor has recommended closer to 430. So that's number I'm using in this budget. And then unfortunately on the student loss, um, our projections that we had plant ran study, um, showed that we should be more flat this year. The reason I have 75 in there, um, I've talked to Gary about this. Uh, we've met with the team. We're not sure why, but our kindergarten enrollment right now is really low. We were, uh, we have 188 students currently and we have maybe 130 registered. We have three or four outstanding. Talking to Jennifer Poston, our student enrollment, talking to Diane, we're trying to figure out, nobody really knows what's going on and we're going to have a bunch of late registrations. But because that number right now is what it is, we felt like we had to put 75 student loss. So hopefully that ends up being, you know, 50 or 40 or 30, uh, to us. That's something we're really watching. Um, uh, we are going to be sending out some postcards, you know, believe the students are out there. We're just not sure if it's COVID thing, what's going on. But as Diane talked about earlier, the preschool enrollments are up. So that's a good sign for next year and a few years on kindergarten. So we're watching that. At any rate, with the big increase we expect to get, but that's going to be offset quite a bit from the, uh, student loss. The revenue increase will be about 288,000 based on those assumptions. So we're looking right now at an operating deficit, um, the bottom line number in red. But again, you know, switch around a couple of these things. We, we don't lose the students we think we're going to lose. We get a little more from state aid and then we can, you know, that, that would go away. But every year we have to, well, it's up to the board. If you want me to change any of these assumptions, I certainly can do that. But this is the model that we've been using for 10 years now and it seems to work for us. So, yeah. And questions like, so I'll be taking these assumptions and, um, putting them into the budget that will be presented in, um, June. We are supposed to adopt a balanced budget, so the, um, salary adjustment line may need to go down a bit. I just want some feedback from the board. Yeah, you should talk about this a lot more. You just have.
Any questions regarding budget assumptions with Jan? Should we give worms for the kindergarten classes? Maybe. Okay. And then I'm gonna go back up a little bit. Dan and Nate Gillette.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yep, that was, that's okay. It was other informational. I see your name up there, but, uh, Dan, you have somebody to introduce to us, right? No, talk to us about some information on, and the action items coming up.
Yes. So, um, I'm gonna let Nate do most of the talking. Um, but is it all of you guys, I think know, um, the CTE, um, field is getting bigger and bigger all the time. And our, and our students realize that. We know that we need to offer more opportunities for our kids in the, in the areas of welding, wood shop and H deck and all of those things. And our, and our programs are exploding, to be honest with you. Um, in, in that area, um, to continue on to provide our kids great quality programs. Um, one of those is wood shop. And I brought with me Nate Gillette, a wood shop teacher, both at the middle school and the high school. It's one of those programs that is just blowing up. Um, and so he's going to talk to you a little bit about that program and about some of the needs that we think we're going to have to have in order to keep up with, uh, the need for our kids. So I'm gonna turn over the name.
Welcome. Thank you. Um, my name's Nate Gillette. Uh, as Stan said, I run the wood shop program in the middle and the high school. Um, we've had that program back open for three years now. I've been doing the last two years, um, running that. Um, recognize quite a few of you guys' last names from having kids in my classes between middle and high school. Um, so, uh, just kind of give you a presentation on where we're at with things and we'll kind of go along. We'll talk about, uh, some of the things that, uh, we're looking at needing. Um, so uh, growth of the programs, uh, in the middle school. Uh, that one's exploding down there. Of, I talked to Mr. Tucker and of the 460 students, I believe we have down there, 264 of those students have signed up next year for wood shop, which is obviously probably only down there two hours. So it's very entirely possible we may end up, uh, just putting eighth graders only in that class, just because there's, there's simply no room for that many kids. Um, this year currently we had 32 to 38 signed up in each of those two sections, give or take, you know, schedule shift, things move up and down. Um, in the high school, we have three sections that I offer and, uh, those sections are quite different. We have woodworking one and two, which averages somewhere in the 28 to 32 signed up. Um, and then construction class, uh, one and two section of that. And that one's a little lower, uh, with 28, 20 to 28 students who sign up, just depending on which it is. Um, some of the updates that we've already done to the shop, uh, we have, uh, in the middle school, we've been able to go through and update a lot of the small hand tools so far. Uh, we also are able to update two of the bandsaws down in the middle school, 14 inch bandsaws. Uh, that is the primary cutting tools for the middle schoolers. So those, those are two key components down for me. The old ones were, uh, original to the middle school shop and they were just, we're taking, had taken a lot of these from 30, 40 middle schoolers a semester. So I use them. So they need to be replaced. The stain room down, down in the middle school had been repainted. Uh, I was able to do that with my kids and redesigned the storage rooms to better fit our students' needs. Um, I tend to, uh, build a little bigger kind of scope projects, a little less of the small items. Um, I kind of have a little bit more of a construction background. So that's where my natural tendency to build things with my kids comes from. Um, up in the high school, we were able to, uh, upgrade our old, uh, table saw to a new saw stop, table saw, which is huge. Uh, if you don't know what that is, it's one of the machines that if, uh, somehow a finger comes in contact with the machine, slams a piston up underneath the blade, drops the blade down and the worst you'll get, if it works correctly, is a small cut of whatever touches it as opposed to taking whatever touches it off. So it was a huge upgrade for the high school. Um, we were also able to upgrade to the heel pads and the joiner and player saves money and time. Um, as opposed to having to have multiple sets of knives on those machines instead of having to be, uh, sharpened. These ones we can just rotate four different times as needed. Anytime it's a piece of metal or just they get dull. Um, I went through and fixed the radio alarm saw to get that up and working correctly. Added a router flattening table for my kids. So we're able to take slabs and mill them down now. Uh, which adds kind of doing some tables and a little more in-depth working for the upper level class. Uh, we built multiple of the tools and workstations, reconfigured and set up the shop to better fit for our students as well. So a lot of different changes in the shop, a lot of updating beyond what was already done. Um, so some of the updates that are needed in the high school shop. All of the equipment, uh, was purchased, uh, 50 years ago, back in 1972. Um, our, our assistant, Mr. Evans, uh, was using those machines when he went to school here. Wow. So that means we have a, uh, joiner, a planer, we have three bandsaws, three lathes, three standing units, two drill press, alarm saw and small table saw. They're all from that age currently in the high school shop. So these machines, while they still work, uh, they don't offer the safety that our students need in today's day and age. Um, you know, parts on them are beginning to fail. They, they just, they need to be upgraded and replaced. Um, that really the equipment that I'm focused on getting upgraded would be the two 14 inch bandsaws, the 20 inch bandsaw, uh, three lathes. Uh, the rest of the machines are either, what we need safety wise, rather than anything else on it by upgrading them, or is something in the future that I think my program can handle upgrading. So that's kind of going to be the lion's share of the machines that we need. And, and then the next big update is going to be the dust collection system for the high school. Um, this is original to when the high school had that shop put in. Uh, this particular machine is imperative to my program. Uh, without this, we don't run a program. Uh, this, uh, this sucks all the dust from everything we cut out into that machine you see there. And it returns air back into the shop to keep the air clean. A lot of the species that we cut are actually toxic to, to our lungs and will cause problems or can cause problems. Uh, specifically when we cut black walnut and cedar, um, that means we can have students that can have allergic reactions to those all the way up to hospitalization if they have a negative reaction to it and they're not aware of that. Uh, so that's why we need to keep all that sucked up and out of there. Um, and also the safety of me over time too, you know, the more that I suck up, the, the worse it gets for me. Um, I'm gonna show you some pictures of kind of what this machine looks like. Uh, when you look in the upper right-hand corner, uh, those are all holes all the way through it. So when we are sucking sawdust down into that bin and in the barrels beneath it, that actually sucks up water into it and then clogs the machine. Um, and you can see the rust through everywhere else on that machine as well. It sits outside in the staff parking lot. So it takes 100% abuse from the weather. Salt is spread down from salt trucks and, you know, any abuse that it may take. So it takes a beating. Um, I, I've spent six, eight hours myself probably in there cleaning it and getting ready to use when it clogs up. I know, uh, Mark and his maintenance team has also spent many hours cleaning and fixing it and getting it ready to be used as well when, when it messes up. So it's, um, it's not broke. It's not dead yet, but it's nearing that phase of its life. Uh, that machine is not cheap. Mark, did we ever get any actual quotes?
We've got another vendor coming out Wednesday.
Okay. So we're working on trying to get some quotes on what that would be, but we have, any of the ballpark range?
Not as of yet.
Tens of thousands?
Uh, yeah, we'd stay probably closer to 50.
So it is not cheap. Um, as I said, it's not dead yet, but it's not the machine I want to die in. And then comes you guys and go, oh, by the way, we need something now. Um, so this is kind of definitely a preparatory thought process with this machine. Um, middle school program. So some of the machines that need to be, uh, upgraded down here, a couple of big ones for me. Be to get a belt sander, disc sander combination. Uh, currently the students only have a, a disc sander to use. Um, the belt sanding portion of it's, uh, puts, it doesn't work correctly. Um, so this, uh, creates a difficulty for the students to, to flatten out larger pieces. It basically only affords them the option to do it by hand or attempt to do it with a disc sander, which is, is a super safe. And it creates a lot of unsafe situations if I'm not paying attention to what they're doing because they obviously get bored standing by hand. So they try to sneak up there and, uh, stand on the disc sander, uh, which can cause cuts on the hands, um, pretty deep cuts down the bone, you know, if, if mistakes are going to happen. Um, so I'd like to get a, uh, disc sander and a, uh, a belt sander combination. So we have a flat sand, sanding kit according to students to flat sand things as well. Um, and I'd also like to introduce two mini lathes, so not full lathes, but small tabletop lathes. Uh, this is going to give the opportunity for the students to begin to learn the lathes before they hit the high school with the big lathes. So it's a safety factor for them. Um, and it also gives them a chance to, uh, add more engagement to the class with 30, 35, 38 students. There's not many machines they can use to bandsaws. And everything else, you know, kind of rotates, starts rotating on the hand tools. So the students, um, need more engagement with that many in the class. Um, this is going to offer that for them. And then it's also going to reduce my waste when it comes to my, uh, woods. It's going to allow me to save money through my program by not having to throw so many scraps away. We can glue them together and we can turn things on them. So it's going to be some savings for the program, uh, over time as well. Um, and then safety, uh, you know, the, the reason we're talking about getting these new machines is not because I'm sitting here going, you know, old machines, I don't want to want new machines. That's not it whatsoever. It's the safety for the program. Um, as I mentioned before, the old machines just don't offer the same safety level that these newer machines are going to afford for our students. Um, the tools being used, you know, unfortunately have potential to take fingers, limbs off, disfigure, you know, or, or potentially worse depending on what happens. Um, so in order for, for me to feel we're doing what we need to as a school, I, I want to make sure my students have the best opportunity that safety they could have by upgrading machines when we see the need for it. Um, you know, as we talked about, this program has grown leaps and bounds in three years. Uh, the students, uh, just keep signing up for it, which is awesome. Um, but that means I, I, I think we need to, you know, meet those needs because not, yes, we do have OSTC we can send our kids to. Um, but that means I, I, I think we need to, you know, meet those needs because not, yes, we do have O S T C we can send our kids to, but not all of our students uh have the time or the ability to donate three hours out of the day to go do that. So this kind of gives them the opportunity to learn some real life skills, um, whether they are interested in heading to college or they're interested in going into the trades. Um, this program at least gives them a look to hopefully make them comfortable enough to want to explore those options. Or when they go home someday, hopefully comfortable enough to start working on things, because hiring someone to do that work is not cheap, assuming you can find someone right now. Um, so some of the savings of the programs. Again, I just want to reiterate, this isn't me coming up here saying I just want brand new stuff with you guys. Um, I work really hard to save our program money. Uh, we went through and I've, I've sourced several different suppliers for uh very inexpensive materials. I, I just run to Home Depot or Lowe's and, and even go grab stuff and have it delivered. Um, I found a couple of local guys who deliver hardwoods for us. Uh, a little more work for my program, because my kids, it's rough sawn, so my kids have to do more work to prep it to use it, but it teaches them how to use the tools. Uh, and it saves us a bunch of money as well. Um, same thing with state paints and stains. Uh, I've, I've found a really cheap supplier that I can get from as well. And then for slabs and other short cutoffs that we make tables and things out of, I've also found a cheap supplier out of Durant. Um, and then I'm able to get huge savings as opposed to just going like down to Armstrong's and saying, here, you know, here's my budget, fill me up with some wood and come back. Um, so I just want to get, make you guys aware of that. And um, it's kind of where I'm at with it. Um, questions that I can answer for you guys right now? I can help with. All right.
Just to reiterate what Nate said, the, the equipment that he's using today was purchased for Fletcher Intermediate, which we sold when it was brand new. That equipment was taken out of that building and recommissioned. So that shop has never had any kind of new equipment.
Thank you for the clarification, and I, I, great presentation.
Yeah.
I mean, I gotta say, you, you, we see the absolute need for this. In growing leaps and bounds, that's what we wanted to hear too, because we think it's a great program. Um, and I know Mark, he's been here a long time. I guess we sort of got an indication even how long, but yeah, he's got a great sense of what's going on here too. So thank you very much. Any questions, comments?
No, I just appreciate that. He's very well done it.
And identifying the safety piece of it, that's huge too, so I appreciate that.
Well, it's just gonna be like Nate said, and it's, it's the, the technology has advanced so much on the newer machines and horses, machines that we bought, makes it heavy too.
Right?
Yes, I agree. And they're, they're making fun stuff, making great stuff, so thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, next, Jan, back to you, the summer community.
Time of year, I was like to um, the board, uh, first of all, we're planning to get the summer. Um, as I believe everyone is aware, um, their SR three, we did a survey last fall. And our parents um definitely wanted us to use um some SR three money to help supplement the camps. So we are, um, they're not free this summer, but we have a lot of STEM camps. They're greatly reduced. Fifty dollars, seventy-five dollars. The vendor might be charging us up to two hundred, so we're using our SR three to greatly reduce the price of camp. To um, and we also have some tuition assistance programs as well for those students that they can't afford the reduced rate. So um, again, educational, we've got our tutoring program, our several STEM camps, uh, different, different themes of the STEM camps. We have some of our teachers that are working the camps, and uh, so registrations are out. Um, we're already getting a good turnout and um, so I'm gonna let you know that.
Well, good.
We're back at it.
Yeah, great news. Any questions for Jan regarding the summer programs?
This is perfect, because I just had a text today asking about the summer program.
Good job, Jan, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're gonna move to our action items. Could I get a motion to support approval of the human resource report?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the human resource report as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Having none, roll call, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines, yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Next, could I get a motion to approve the Neola Policy Updates three thirty-six point two?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to accept Neola Policy Updates thirty-six point two as presented.
Okay, second, second. Thank you, Rebecca. Any discussion? Having none, could I get a roll call, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Could I get a motion to approve or to accept the first reading of the Neola Policy Updates thirty-six point one?
Move Brandon Board of Education approve to accept the first reading of Neol Policy Updates thirty-six point one as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Having none, roll call, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Could I get a motion to approve the School Resource Officer tentative agreement?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the School Resource Officer tentative of contract as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion on that? Having none, could I have a roll call, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Uh, could I get a motion to approve the tractor purchase?
Approval of tractor purchase. Or, sorry, move, I was just moving. Move the Brandon Board of Education approve that the new Howland AG tractor purchase from Dick Quilter Incorporated, the amount not to exceed sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred, eight hundred, sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred, eight and nineteen cents as presented.
Support.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that? Could I get a roll call, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Okay, could I get an approval to purchase the shop equipment?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to purchase the recommended wood shop equipment for the middle and high schools as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Could I get approval of an RFP for the whole shop air filtration dust collection system?
Approval of RFP for whole shop air filtration dust collection system.
Oh, gosh, fine.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to develop RFP documents and solicit bids qualified contractors to replace the whole shop air fil- air filtration dust collection system at the high school as presented.
Support.
Could I get a roll call, please?
Melissa, that's not the way to move the answer. Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Could I get a motion for the approval of bond construction change orders and payment?
Move the Brandon Board of Education authorize the Superintendent and the Executive Director of Finance Business Services jointly to approve and execute construction contract change orders and payment thereon to facilitate completion of board authorized bond projects as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Could I get enough motion for the approval of scope of work proposal for the athletic projects?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the scope of work proposal for athletic projects as presented.
Support. Okay, any discussion? Could I get a roll call, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Could I get a motion for the approval of authorizing resolution for the transfer of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two operating surplus?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution for the transfer of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two operating surplus as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Having none, could I get a roll call, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Uh, could I get a motion for the budget resolution for the Oakland Intermediate School District?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the ISD budget resolution in support for the general fund budget as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Could I get a motion for the resolution for the Oakland Schools Board of Education biannual election?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the resolution as presented.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Could I get a roll call, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Okay, or getting the end here, citizens input. Let's see those check. Any hands up?
No hands are raised.
Okay, and did anybody sign up since the last? Okay, thank you. Having no citizens input, could I get a motion, please, to go to closed session for the purpose of security planning?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve to enter a closed session for the purpose of security planning for the safety and students and staff as presented.
Support.
Okay, roll call, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Jeff Zilke?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Okay, we're moving into closed session, and uh, we thank you. Does anybody need a couple minute break before we, you guys go to go? We're good? Okay, thank you.